China five years. Five years. That's your Puma Nia Goza, you know, but I'm gonna buy you five years. Who does not know any of the five years. What was your land in the manifest about 12 months ago now? Tell us now, um, see, no, see, truly, the trailer it district, the Nigesa Amanda, it can't be province. It can't be province, it's really province in the Tulele. National. Is our Nigese lucky district in the Tulele district. And from the national fund, the route at least singa make. Make a babo, Joe, come on my officials, I'll bang about five years, man is cool.
The bonnie could start over. Head portfolio committee, the bully is a good on camera lunga as a parliament. Who because of Koyo, um, amakanzela's. Eh, no, I'm para to one, yeah, was say, who go healthy, who got the street. Law, who tell you, I'm gonna my way to be nice, open my provincial office square in each eye. Yeah, I'm back on you, not Dr. Marcho, who is a public health specialist.
NHS, I'm doing NHS. Okay, NHS, I'm down.
Okay, eh, so Puma was NHS, that means eh, so Puma clicker law office, eh. International Health Insurance. Um, sure, let's see, low, Siam bank, I won't have lunch, eh, Sis, and get Billy, ah, oh, good, it's born, good, he, yeah, pass on the parliament. Now, um, sure, let's also to be get a little one, eh, um, do, um, sister, come on, say, since Africa. Okay. The amber gene, the national, eh, national, senior advice advocate to to stand by night, um, is the mobile, so I can apply. Then.
Come back to Bungu, you belong to. Apple, you're gonna call, and it's not that you said, ah, corner.
So gezon tateje, geung gu gu ukoke goba mote. So yeah, as I was saying, for those that are in our social media, I'll be taking you through the bill in English and my colleague, Mr. Mangale, will be translating in Isizulu. Eh, as you can see that the bill has got a preamble. It's giving us a story as to why are we having this bill? The bill is the National Health Insurance Bill, which is Bill Number Fifteen B, B Fifteen B of twenty twenty. Um, it's got a long title, the part that is in bold, and then it's got a preamble. So the preamble is basically recognizing our socio-economic injustices, the imbalances and inequities of the past. It also seeks to heal the divisions of the past to establish a society based on democratic values and also recognizes that there's a need to improve quality of life for all citizens eh, and make sure that they are free, it frees the potential of each person. So bearing in mind that in terms of Article Twelve of the United Nations Covenant on Economic, Social and Cultural Rights of nineteen sixty-six, the article provides for the right of everyone to enjoyment of the highest attainable standard of physical and mental health and also in terms of our African of physical and mental health. And it also requires eh the state parties to take necessary measures to protect the health of their people and to ensure that they receive medical attention when they are sick. And also, as the chairperson did indicate, that we have Section Twenty-seven of our Constitution of nineteen ninety-six, which provides that everyone has a right to have access to healthcare services and that includes your reproductive healthcare for the women. And also eh in Section Nine and Ten of the Constitution, there is eh a recognition of rights to equality, that is Section Nine, as well as Section Ten, that recognizes the right to human dignity that all of us have. So eh the Constitution and the UN Covenant as well as the Charter. Ngibonge eh, ngizo wenza kobili. Ngizo ikaza ngasngisi, ebese ngie enza futi ngitoli ngasizulu. Eh, ukala ngasizulu, slalo. Lomteto sivivinywa espa mwa o. Njongo bengikaza ngasngisi, ukuti la kunese thulo ukuti kunani, sile, lomteto utingera ngani. Kuyabona kala ukuti ekati ni zakdala. Kwa banen kina ukuti aslingani eh, askuwazi futu ukuti sibe ne mbi lo engono sibe sonke, kwa sibona kalukutawenza kelo mte. Joo ebese ngshilo ukuti si umzansi Africa, nati si member, kwa United Nations sapa la ukuti sia saina lolululelolo kaluwango nineteen sixty-six ukuti. Siti wongu mondo agabe nelungele lukuti akwazukuti atogo zelele impilo engono. Ngogweze mbi lo, kanyen mbi lo ngogwenondo, i i i mental health, no ukuti eh nati si Africa sine Charter yamalungele abantu. Ebese ukutige u Article Sixteen na yewiyashukuti, fanele skua zukuti sibe ne, si kuwazi wongu mondo la Africa akwazukuti atole impilo. Ngege, ebese ngie akui constitution, omte tossegelo, lo osa opasi sango, iskaba seshaka lolunye, uku Section Nine, utisonke sina malungele ukuti silingani, i right to equality. Ebese ukuti i iskaba se shume, o Section Ten, utige fanele si kuwazi ukuti sibe ne hu- human dignity. Ogo ikutige sina so ikuti sina stunsisa abantu, bongela imzansi Afrika. Ebese sia umtukuskaba samashumabili nescombis o Section Twenty-seven. Lo os nega sage ilungele lukuti sibe ne, lukuti si kuwazi ukuti sipile, sitole tiso leze mbi lo ama healthcare services. No ukuti ma be, njengo basaba nbesfazani, si kuwazi ukuti swatole la malungelele. Sizule siyo, okulumage ngama lungelo es ngani ukuti ingane zonke skona. Yezwe la se South Africa nabo, banelungele ukuti bakwazukuti batole usizo leze mbi lo. Eh, in English I didn't mention Section Twenty-eight wherein we're saying the Constitution provides that every child has a right to basic healthcare services, irrespective of whether they are from illegal immigrants or not. Then se nzo yakuyona ngo ipili, ngo ba ipili, lomteto sivivinywa, wenzelukuti sizo okulumange universal healthcare coverage ukuti wongu mondo agawa zukuti atole ukusiza gala ngoweze mbi lo. Ngizo yake ukala i purpose, nama isizatu ukuti why si zee na lomteto sivivinywa. Eh, ipili ke ikala nama isungula i NHI Fund ukuti uzoba iskwama es i organ of state, nama si ulhelo, le ngambani ya hulmeni ezobe ipaliwe, gogwe PFA umteto lo opega, uksebenzi so nama ipakwama zuksebenzi iskwama semali kahulmen. Eh, ipili ke futi eh, ipegue ukutige ishukuti le NHI, nama lumshwalense, ima apa ma functions, ama powers, nama duties ayo. So we seek to establish the National Health Insurance Fund eh, its functions, the powers and duties, and also eh provide for the control of the fund by the board, the composition of board, the appointment of members of board, the appointment of chairperson and vice-chairperson of board, the meetings of board, the appointment of committees of the board and disqualification from membership of board, as well as vacation of office. So lomteto ke siti uzoba ne body, le fund, le seskwama le sisema, sisomshwalense, sizo si kontrola, nama sizo bespetwe ipodi, sizo okulumage ngokutige ipodi obana bazu kwa zukuti babe amalungo ayo. Azokhetwa kanjani, okui appointment ya o, no ukutu slalo, no segela slalo bazo khetwa kanjani, kube imlangano ya o ipodi, ebese kubwa ukutige eh, labo abazo mbembe ogi ukuti banke ne kule body, mangabe izi pisi do abazo bebe zenzilukuti bat disqualify, nama bangamomgele ukuti bakubenge babe se bodini, no ukutige umondo umaganjani skunzi. Eh, ipill also seeks to define beneficiaries of services covered by the NHI Fund and that also includes the population registration. Eh, it also provides for the contracting of accredited providers of personal healthcare services and allows for the minister to determine criteria for accreditation and reinvestment of healthcare providers. So lomteto sivivinywa upinde opegele lukutige obana abantu abazu kwa zukuti ba xomole, ukuti batole i inziza ngale kule fundle, no ukutige wongu mondo ke ozobe egoshi weapons ukuti u isakamozi uzawa zukxomola. Ipindefuti icho ukuti, labo abazo bebe ama service providers, o dogoteela ne ipeldeela. Sizo kwa zukwana lukuti zibalise nazukuti, zishukuti izo na ezi leta usizo leze mbi lo. No ukutige u ngongo she weze mbi lo, uyena ke ozo shukuti, abantu ba creditwa kanjani, banigazwa kanjani kunya, lukuti ba babe abantu abanikeza inziza ngasimbi lo, no ukutige bazo kokelwa kanjani, es abantu abaleta inziza zezimbi. The bill will also provide for the minister to determine healthcare benefits that will be reimbursed through the NHI Fund as well as the service coverage and cost measurement provisions. Njongo ebese nkazi le ukutige, wongu mondo ke ama benefits nama u xomola, u ngongo she uyona uzobe shukuti, laba basomola bazo bebe xomola kanjani, no ukutige laba bazo bebe benza lo umsebenzi bazo kokelwa ngendle njani. Ngizo ebese nkazi ke ipili eh ngama chapters eh, las okuluman kona ngayi layout of chapters. Chapter one talks to the definitions, the purpose and application of the Act. Chapter two talks to the access to healthcare services. Chapter three talks to the NHI Fund. Chapter four deals with the Board of Fund. Chapter five deals with the CEO. Chapter six eh talks to the committees that are going to be established by this bill. Seven talks to the advisor committees. The chapter eight eh provides for the general provisions that are applicable to operation of fund. Chapter nine provides for complaints and appeals. Chapter ten provides for financial matters. Then chapter eleven talks to miscellaneous provisions. So ke isaxlo eso beskuluma ngazo lukusikubiza ngama chapters kuloma mte tosivivinywa. Isaxlo sokala siso beskuluma ngikukazwa kwama kama, ebese kutcho ukutige ini injongo yalo mte to, no ukuti uzosebenza kanjani kupiko bani. Eh, isaxlo sesbili siku luma ke ngokuti eh umondo kwa zanjani noktola inziza zo kweze mbi lo. Isaxlo sesstatu siku luma ngao lumshwalense, isaxlo sesine siku luma nghe body. Isaxlo seshtupa siku luma ngama committee akui wana azokanjwa ilo mte tosivivinywa. Esescombisasiku luma ngama advisor committees, zogwa ama committee alule gayo. Kwama, eseshaka lumbili, chapter eight, siku luma ke ngokutige i kaba ezikuizona ezobe zisebenza kule siskwama. Isaxlo seshaka lolunye, chapter nine, siku luma ke ngokuti i kalo, nama umondo mefunu lulisa iskalo, wenzelanjani ukuti, ashukuti agatogo zile, no ukuti eh aapile, gesngomo statwe ipodi. Eh, eseshumi siku luma ke ukuti ismali, zizo kamgapi ukuti le siskwama zuksebenza. Ebese ukuti ishumna nyie o chapter eleven. Ilage siskuluma ngai kaba ke ekubile ukutige lomteto sivivinywa upetini. Ebese ukutige kuneshudu le gneni, la ikuluma kona ngayi yonke imte to, ezobe iktrichiyeliwe lukusikubiza ngamendment, ebese kuba nali omte to, imte to ezokhitwa ilo mte to lo, kwa basa kuwonosu zisebenza. Lo kuge esikubiza ngokutige ya repilwa by this bill. Eh, ankluleke ngale ku chapter one njongo be binkazi lukuti isaxlo seskala, we are talking about ama definitions, siku lume nghe purpose as well as the application of the Act. Wonge lama kama, so bona kui mte tosivivinywa ku page five. We've got all the words that are defined in terms of this bill. Eh, those words are in bold and eh the definition thereof is actually explaining how the words are used in the body of the bill. So inasmuch as i kama, mangabiltazi wengasngisi, ngegelfane ngendlela eltolegwe ngayo kuloma mte to. So sia kazi ke ukuti i kamaneka malishuktini kuloma mte to. So ibona ke from page five to page seven. And then sia kui purpose of the Act, okuingi ti ukuti usoseni lomte to. Lomteto ke seeks to establish and maintain a national health insurance fund in the republic that is going to be funded through mandatory prepayment that aims to achieve sustainable and affordable universal access to quality healthcare services. And then the fund will be a single purchaser and single payer of healthcare services and it will be eh through eh the pooling of funds and strategic purchasing of healthcare services as well as goods eh from accredited contracted eh healthcare service providers. So ke njongo be ngishukuti ingegi ti alomte to lo, eh sisa ma ukuti sikame, i National Health Insurance Fund, iskwama, so saskazwe loonge, somshwalense. Okuwono ukuti, wongu mondo ozobe seswe, nizo egazukuti atole usizo ngalo, ngoweze mbi lo. No ukutige eh akwazukutakoke, ukuti labo abantu bakokeleke eh ngapambi lukuti, wongu mondo funusizo akwazukutale tole, kota ke ama service providers obe kokeliwe. Eh, siskwama ke isone soko zukuti sitenge zonke inziza, nama injela yoktola usizo leze mbi lo, ilona futi, isona futi esobe kuisona, esobe skokela, yonke injela ukuti umda asiza gala ngoweze mbi lo. Lo kuge kuzo wenzelangwa ukuti zonke ismali ezobe zifagwe kule siskwama, zikwazukuti sitenge ama, ama services na ne inziza zukuti umda akwazukuti as atole usizo leze mbi lo. And then at clause three, we'll find it on page eight. It talks to the application of the Act. Eh, this Act applies to all health establishments and this will exclude the military healthcare, eh health services as well as the secret services. And the Act will not affect the funding and functions of any organs of state in respect of healthcare services until relevant legislation has been enacted or amended. And where there is conflict with other legislation, this Act will prevail except for the application of the Constitution and the PFMA. So ke lomteto lo uzobe, uzosebenza kuzo zonke i ipeldeela eh amase chari, nazozonke in dao la kunigazwa kona usizo leze mbi lo, lokoge ke agu, laba abazo bebe semashen, badezobe bene shelo labo, ukui ilona ulbaka ta ngoweze mbi lo, na labo eh abasu shelu nenili injoli, secret services ukuti nabo, bazobe bene shelo loabo ulbapegelela ngoweze mbi lo, kota wongu umnyu mundo, zonke in dao bazobeke be petwe ilolu, il siskwama le sese mbi lo. Eh, ipindi shoke omte to ukuti, mangabe ukona enye ini, omu nyumte to oshayisana nawolo, okune conflict ngayo eh, uwana lomte to uwana okzoba kambiili. Uwonosobe zisebenza eh, ngapandleke mangabukuti lomte to oshayisana, lomte to ssegelo, nama i Public Finance Management Act, ukumte toke we kwa masuksebenza eh, uweze mali ku hulmen. Then I'll go to clause four, that deals with the population coverage, you'll find that on page eight of the bill. Eh, the clause provides that the fund will purchase services on behalf of the South African citizens, the permanent residents, the refugees, the inmates and specific categories of foreign nationals. Eh, the asylum seekers and illegal foreigners will only be provided eh with emergency medical services, eh the notifiable conditions as well as basic healthcare services. And then eh, as for the children, as I did mention in Section Twenty-eight of the Constitution, all children will be getting medical healthcare services. And then for the visiting foreign nationals eh, those will be covered by the travel insurance. Lanage sia shukuti njongo ati zonke skona, la ezwe ni la semningizim Africa, obana bazo bebe kavoe ilomshwalense. Eh, lomshwalense ke ukava bonge abantu aba aba xali balaa eh South Africa, abanobuzwe la eh South Africa, ebese kuba na labo aba xala permanently, aba abantu ba ngapandle kota aba xala permanently nabu bazo kavoa. Ebese kuba ama refugees, laba esbabi za njengama aba futugi, nama aba legi, emazwi na ba kamgakuona bazo kavoa, kube isboshwa. Ebese kubeke na labo aba puma ngapandle bazo kwa zukuti bakavu ilomte to. Eh, labo aba ama asylum seekers, nama aba patile ezwe ni, na labo aba aba ama illegal foreigners, nama abantu ba ngapandle aba fige la ezwe ni, gonke mte to. Buona bazo kavonje esmweni sese mbi lo ezputumayo ama emergency medical services. Ebese kuba ukuti nezi fo eztile ezhi notifiable, mhlabe njongo Covid kanjani, eh ne mbi loke eh basic ukuti usizo olputumayo loloko te agaltole espeldeela. Bazuka zukuti bakaveke kanjani, lokota konko kunye, ngenge babe nelungele ukuti baitole lezo inziz. Eh, i ingane ke njongo be binkazi lukuti omte to ssegelo ukuskaba eh, samashumabili neshaka lomteto. Sia shukuti zonke ingane eskona emgeline la weswe, sia fanele ukuti zithole longu sizo leze mbi lo. So ingane nama aktiwa i ingane yongu mondo wangapandle ofige ezwe ni gonke mte to uzokwazukutakaveke. Ebese ukuti i varashi, zonage zitata omshwalense wa zukuti sia varasha zikwazukuti iskaveke, gegaze kavoe NHI. Then I'll go to clause five that talks to registration as users. Eh, eligible persons must register and that includes children with accredited healthcare providers or establishments. Newborns will be automatically registered at birth and supervising adults must register children in a childhooded household and there will be use of biometrics and other prescribed information eh during registration. Eh, lanage siti mangabe umondo eh registwa, ukuti wongu mondo njongo basi kona njehange line line. Fanele zonke shambesiyo register, sipalisukuti sizo besa bassebenzisi bezinziza zoku sese mbi lo. Eh, ne ingane ngonjalo ukuti ingane abanye ingane mangabe zaloa nazozizo registwa kanjalo. Eh, ne ingane ezngane nazofanele shambesiyo baliswa. Eh, emzinigele es i petwe eh i ingane, lukusikubiza ngama childhooded households sia zukuti eh abantu. Zesele zotwa, kube nomapige okona okadele zoi. Anukuti zio baliswa ukuti zizo ba abantu abazo kwa zuktola usizo leze mbi lo, e ipeldeela. Eh, kuyatatoage, kuyobe kusetatoage i tupa, na yonke eminyi mneni ngwane ezobaliswa ukuti umondo, uzobe eh umondo ozobe etola usizo, ngapanzi kwa le siskwama. Na ne ipeldelege no dogoteela eh bonge ama GP i amaluku zane, abantu aba aba kale ipeldele ne ingane zonke zonke zobe se ipaliswa ukuti nazo, izo ne nigeza usizo leze mbi. Ngilule ngie eska benisestupa, o clause six, somtola ku page nine kuloma mte to, kumte tosivivinywa. Lanage siku luma ngama lungelo, abasebenzisi bezimbi lo. We're talking about rights of healthcare users. Eh, healthcare users will be having the following rights. Number one, it will be a right to quality healthcare services free at the point of care. The information relating to the fund, the service benefits as well as personal information. And eh the healthcare user will not be refused access to healthcare services on unreasonable grounds. Eh, they'll have access to healthcare within a reasonable timeframe. They'll have reasonable deci- eh reasonable decisions about his or their health care will be communicated immediately. They'll be able to submit complaints if there are any and they'll be entitled to receive written reasons for fund's decisions. And they'll be able to purchase healthcare services that are not covered by the fund through a complimentary voluntary medical insurance scheme. So ke lana ama lungelo abantu abazo bebe thola lolusizo leze mbi lo. Ukuti umondo akwazukuti atolu sizo leze mbi lo, olse kopelene npezulu. Eh, lapo ke yobe enaki pingi shisenti, zobe thola mahala. Eh, mangabe ukona in isfiso afutsa ukwazi, ngendaba siskwama le sizo kwa zukutashtole. Akwazuktola no ukuti izi pisi indo akwazi ama benefits azo banao. Ebese ukutige angega za ngajelwe ukuti atole usizo leze mbi lo. Eh, mangabe izi zatu zingabona gali. Akwazukuti eh, mangabe edingusizo ngokutumayo atole. Eh, ebese ukuti ngomo e tatoa ifund, eh aziso ngazo, mangabe ti usizo oltili ngakuzo ultole, aziso ngeskati, ebese akwazuke no ukuti afage skalazo, no me complaint ngaleso, ngaleso sngomo. Eh, mangabe futi kunee izi zatuleso zukuti ngajelwa no ukutanga latolu sizo, fanele zipalu, azitole zipalu e panzi. Ebese ke ukuti kona izi inziza eztile, umondo angeke azo akwazukutola ngenga ukuti eh ifunda iskaveke, ebese ukutige umondo mangabe eno eno medical aid, akwazukuti azkave ngazo, lokoge kufananezindo zukuti mhlabe eh ma funukuti abemu she, abe nama hips isinga inde kanjalo, nama zinyama kolide yonke leondo, yobeke es skokela yena ke medical aid yake. Ngoba le siskwama le sipegele impilo, aspegele izindo zama accessories isetelin. Ngilule ngie ke eska benisestcombis, o clause seven. Ngilule ngieke eskabene ses kombis, uclause seven that talks to the healthcare services coverage. Eh, the. Ten, eh, where a provider or establishment is unable to provide a registered service, then the facility or provider must transfer the user to another provider or establishment. Eh, the user must enter at the primary healthcare level and follow referral pathways as conditions of entitlement. Eh, the minister must designate central hospitals as semi-autonomous or that will mean they are national government components. And then the treatment will not be funded if no, there's no medical necessity, there's no cost effectiveness and it's not included in the formulary. And if the fund declines a benefit, then it should provide reasons and allow for an appeal process. Njoba ngisho ukuti eh, ndawo ke esobe thola kona usizo leze mbi lo. Ibonage, njoba benkilo ukuti nabofanele be rechiste es, izi, ndawo ezobe zinigeza lolusizo leze mbi lo, gunaba utogoteela, gunaba isbeldele. Eh, lapo ke omuntu manga be ekala efuna usizo, fanele akale ayekwe primary healthcare level, oguinjela, ogu umnyango, ukuti angene eh, 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 ndelele nyo kusizagala ngoweze mbi lo. Loko ke kusho ukuti angaya kutogoteela ou general practitioner, no ma ayekliniki. Ebese kuba ibona eh, bazobe sebe refaya bemisa eh, e ibeldele esngulu. So, omuntu angega sa vua ukutavela esbeldele, ebese eti ay ngipetwe ikanda ngesbeldele, fanele akale u primary healthcare level. Eh, ungongo shoge, uyena ke ozobeke, enigezwenekunye ukuti adisane, a, a, designate, no ma ogu e ibeldele itile ukuti kuzoba ama central hospitals. Ogzo ba ibeldele ifana na no albetluthuli etehui no ukutige lezo ibeldele, kuyobe kuzobe ikui ibeldele ezi imele, gota sizo beziu, zisa i uhlalaga hulmeni. No ti, no ukutige eh, usizo leze mbi lo, ngagele zulkokelu, ma wunga bekbonaga lukutige asiko istingo soguti, omuntu ah, enzelu, lolusizo leze mbi lo, njoba ngisho njee, izi nama hipsi, ama zinyama kolite ganjalo ganjalo. Manga bekbonaga lukuti asiko futi nasosweni, lezinzi za eszokokelwa, omuntu zokua ukuti asebensei medical aid yake. No ukutige iskwama nga besingaba ukuti sikokele ama benefit, no musizo oltile. Kufanele ukuti sinigeze izi zatu, zoguti gunani eh, lo omuduengega zaltholusizo, ebese siyai, isho futi indela ukutu omuntu afage i appeal process, no ma uku kala, uku, uku apila, uku, uku ngayanga ukuti agu vua ukutu omuntu athole lolusizo. Eh, uclause eight ge talks to the cost coverage, as I did indicate, that eh, it will be free at the point of care, omuntu agesu ukipa ngishisendi manga be edinga usizo leze mbi lo, maye ngenanjee, eh, shari eh, upetwe izinyo, ngenagu dentist, ngenanjee ukom, ukombe zinyolako, bagu, bagu, ilonge bayalkipa, mabelkipa, ba fagi feeling manga be be fagi feeling, gota auke. Ebese ngidiaku clause nine, shaka lombili, iskaba lezo seshaka lombili, so thola upage eleven. This eh, clause establishes the fund. It says that the fund will be eh, established eh, as a schedule three capital A public entity. This will be eh, in terms of the Public Finance Management Act. Ogu shogo ukuge lezis kwama, lezi kuzoba iskwamas kahulmeni, ogu i, i, ingambaani kahulmeni kahlal, ezobeke esu ethola la manga besmuka u schedule three capital A with PFMA, uyusho ingambaani skahulmeni, ukfana no escom, ukfana no prasa ganjalo ganjalo. So, na yole fund ezobe i, i ingambaani eganjalo. Ebese ngia ku clause ten that talks to the functions of the fund, ukutige lezis kwama iinumsebenzwa. Eh, the fund will actively purchase services and enter into procurement contracts for goods. Eh, it will eh, ensure that eh, people are timely reimbursed, the service providers actually. And then it will determine payment rates annually in a prescribed manner. It will ensure that eh, there's appropriate funding for healthcare services at various levels. It will monitor the quality and standard of healthcare services. It will eh, look at the performance profile of all service providers and also pay for performance. Eh, in terms of performance, it will monitor eh, the impact of the fund in addressing healthcare needs. It will also lie as an exchange information between the Department of Health, the entities and statutory councils. It will maintain a national database of population in terms of their demographics and eh, epidemiology. It will perform functions in the most cost-effective and efficient manner. Eh, it will ensure that the, the funding is aligned to health policies approved by the minister as well as the responsibility to contribute to the protection, promotion, improvement and maintenance eh, of the health of the population. So, umsebenzwa lezis kwama ukuti, uke, ukelelo ukuti, zonki inziza zese mbi lo, ya uyazkokela eh, no ma uyaztega manga be zifunagala. Eh, uzo vua zige ukuti kube ibona basho ukuti bakokela ngama rates ah, o, no manjez. Ga, ganjani, ebese ku ukutige eh, uzo xola futu ukuti ikopelo pezuluini leze mbi lo. Upego ukutige ama ibeldele no dogoteela ba performa ngendele ifanele ini. Eh, uva zukutige ube umkumani sipagatiwa umnyango weze mbi lo, nazo zonke injaga skahulmeni, uva zuke ukutige eh, usizagala weze mbi lo eh, imali ayimosheki. Eh, zithola gala ngendele ezi ngalize male sapanzi. Upinde futi eh, upego ukuti eh, omuntu wonge uyagua zukuti a protecteke, no ukuti agu vua ukuti a improve ezi, izimo sze mbi lo yak. And then I'll go to clause eleven eh, isashlose shumin, iskaba se shuminanye. Last ku isashlose start with chapter three, lak skulumakona ngama powers ay fund. So, thola ku i kasile shuminambiili page twelve. Eh, the fund will employ personnel and purchase or acquire goods, equipment, land, buildings and related assets. It will draw, draft, accept, endorse, discount, sign and issue promiser notes, bills and other negotiated or transferable eh, instruments. It will insure itself against any loss, damage, risk or liability. It will investigate complaints against the fund, providers, establishments or suppliers. It will eh, implement best practices in terms of purchasing of services, procurement of goods, efficient delivery of healthcare services, data collection as well as analysis and fraud prevention. It will also rela- research relating to improving universal health coverage and exchange information with organs of state. It will also institute or defend legal proceedings and negotiate lowest possible price for services and goods. So, iskwama lezi, sizo vua ukuti iskache abasebenzbaso, ogu ibona bazobe be thola zonke inziza zokseben, zozozokseben zese mbi lo, eh, imshini etingalayo. No ukutige i, manga be fanele thola yomshaba, manga be fanele kwaki isbeldele, ibona bazobe benza loko eh, na wonge ama assets azobe etingeja ku, ku lezo ibeldele. Bazoka vua zuge futi ukuti eh, kube ibona abadraftayo, abakokayo ama promiser notes nama bills of ama, ama negotiable instruments ukuti manga be kune xelo lo ukuti omuntu abagu vua ukuti bakokelege, gunaba amasheki kube izimo zo ukuti abanye bakokelo ama bitcoins kule insugu. So, i, i, iskwama lezi zobe senza gonge lok. Sizo be futi sipegelela no ukuti agu vua ukuti kula xlege i impasha zkahulmeni no ma zlimale. Eh, bazoka vua zuge futi ukuti ba penye manga be kune kalo ngaso iskwama, no ma isbeldele ukuti abantu abaltu, usizo abaldingayo. No ma ama suppliers manga be engaliti i van, i, i, ama, ama, ama assets afunoa, abantu ibeldele ganjalo ganjalo. Azo vua ukuti futi manga be kune simosa fraudi, bagu vua ukuti ba penye. Eh, bagu vua zuge futi ba reseche no ma ba, ya ba, ba, ba reseche ngendaba ukuti si, li, nyusaga njanizi ngaa, logo tuongu omuntu athole eh, mbi lo eno, logo sibiza ngi universal health coverage ukuti omuntu agu vua ukuti asizagale vuka weze mbi lo. No ukutige eh, bazu manga be kunamakala, ibona bazu defender la omakala akamga. Ebese ngia ku ipo tige, sizo ethola lapo isashloge ni sesine ogu chapter four, lak skulumakona ngepod of fund eh, iskaba se shuminambiili uclause twelve, skulumako ogu establish oke port ukuti lisungulwa ganjange. Ilage sisho konukuti ilizo sungulwalali body and eh, i governance ya i board is accountable to the minister, ungongo shere, bo na ba pendula ungongo shere manga besesunguliwa. Ebese iskaba se shuminandat uclause thirteen talks to the constitution and composition of board. I boardige will have eleven members that are appointed by the minister with cabinet approval and their expertise will be ranging amongst somewhere, people with healthcare service financing, health economics, public health planning, monitoring and evaluation, law, extral sciences, information technology and communication. And eh, the term of the board will be a five-year term, which is only renewable once. And the exclusions, people that will be excluded will be those that are having eh, conflicts of interest. And then the minister will appoint an ad hoc panel that will interview candidates and also recommend a shortlist to minister for appointment. Then the minister will have powers to remove a board member on specified conditions. And the minister also has powers to dissolve the board after inquiry and cabinet approval on specified conditions. Eh, then ge, the minister will have to appoint an acting board for a period of three months. So, lanage sisho ukuti i board ilali, ilizo ba nama lungu, abantu ba, abazobe be ishuminanye, eleven members, abazobe be kowe ungongo shere. Envahogo ukuti ekulume ne cabinet, no ma iskunguskahulmeni. Kuzoba abantu ke abanopke, abanopkepe she obtile weze mbi lo eh, ezasmali zebilo eh, umnoto weze mbi lo, health econ- economics eh, i public health, uku, uku i planela ukutige i, 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 eze mbi lo zomphagatis hamba ganjani, abaxolaayo, i monitoring and evaluation, abantu abazobe, baz, beno zilwa zilazo umteto. Kuba abantu abagu vua ukubala isbalile zozibiza ngi extral sciences, kubesi kuba abantu abano, abazana, abazi indela ge zokumana ne IT. So, ge ipo tilelo ge abantu bayo kowa iskati, es, esimnyare mchano, ezo vua ukuti ivu sellelo kanye. Gotage, omuntu manga be ukuti une conflict of interest, no ma o omuntu, mchame une sbeldele, ngerasa agu vua ukuti angene e potini ngoba, omuntu oyobe ene, ene injoso no ma e, ezuza, ku lezi zimo, so ngerasa agu vua ukutangene potini. Ungongo shere, uyena oyobe eh, hole, eh, 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 appointe lezo sngu, esu vua ukuti si sensei, ujolokono ya ama candidates eh, azobe efuna ungena e potini. Le, ebese ke le, le, lezo sngu, so nesohambi sa ilisti ku, ungongo shu ukuti nababantu esiba bone ku ibona fanele banke ne potini. Eh, ungongo shere, unnamanla ukuti ab keepe ababantu e potini manga be kune, kune zimo estile. Na uyagua zuge futi ukuti ame se ipodi longe, normal kritelonge ipodi. Envahogo ukuti kube no penyo, no ukuti eh, i cabinet, no ma iskunguskahulmeni eh, sesboni lukuti kune stingo. Ebese ke ekoga abantu abazobe be bambeile ezipodi iskati se nyange ndatu, ogusho ukutige iskatin se nyange ndatu. Fanele kube kalwa i process ukuti ku owe abanye, abazonke ne potini. And then uclause fourteen talks to the chaplain and deputy chair of the board. The minister appoints the chair after consulting cabinet and the board selects the deputy. Lanage ushalo e body, ukowa ungongo shere, ebese ukutige i board ilona, ilonage eli okweta uskele slalo wali board. And then clause fifteen talks to the functions and powers of board. Eh, here, the board needs to fulfill the functions of an accounting authority as required by the PFMA. It has to meet at least four times a year. It has to advise the minister on matters relating to the fund, including financing, administration, pricing etc. Eh, the board also will define type of reports that are required from the executive management. Lanage skulumanga ukuti i, 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 ama powers, no ma amanda e potini, no ukuti fanelele nzeini. Lanage siasho ukutige ilo, uyena, ibona abapendulayo eh, e parlamenti, ibona abapete iskwama lezi. Eh, njoba u PFMA eshu ukuti eh, fanele kubene accounting authority, manga ukona okbedayo i board ilonelpendulayo. Eh, fanele gelilhangane i katezine ngonyaga eh, ilona futi eli, eli, eli advisor ungongo shere, manga be kune inda benzo ukuti iskwama mchame kuyashota imalini. Eh, ebase benzinie no ma kukryza i, 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 usizo leluleze mbi lo. Eh, ilona futi ge, fanele li shu ukuti lifuna ama reputi, ama, ama reputi akamga e kulune e pezulu abe ngalshoboluni. And then uclause six, the conduct and disclosure of interest. It says any paid employment that will conflict with the work of the fund eh, will have to be disclosed and there has to be declaration of interest if any. Lanage sisho ukuti manga be ukona indela yokuzpata itile, no ma omuntu eh, 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 hola ekelini. Fanele manga be ukutakshaisan neskwama, fanele asho ukutai eh, mchame ngudogotele ekelini. Asho ukuti ka ngineshe chari ganji, ganji eh, a declare ama interest ak. Ke uguze manga be i ngomo itatwa, maguzoba nesngomo esobe skonde nenaye. Eh, ngogo umsebenzwa ke agu vua ukuti ahok iswe angabe inga inge ukuti akulume izindo zganjalo, ngoba uyobe nenaye, ezozomilisayen. And then uclause seventeen talks to the procedures eh, of the board. Ukuti i board will determine its own procedures, bazu sbonela ukuti eh, ama procedure abohamba ganjani. Then uclause eighteen talks to the remuneration and reimbursement wherein we're saying the rates would be determined between the Minister of Health and the Minister of Finance. Lanage kusho ukutige eh, ama member e body azokokelwa eh, manga beke ungongo shere zebilo esekulumisayen. Kwama eh, will find this in clause eh, in, in page sixteen. Where in clause nineteen talks to the appointment of the CEO. It says this person must have technical competence and experience. The board will interview the candidates eh, for the CEO. CEO will be a term of five years, which is only renewable once. And then the board also has powers to recommend the removal of the CEO. Eh, lanage. Non eh, experience ekpatin eh, i boardige uzo ba ilona eli interviewer, no ma elenza injolokono. Non eh experience ekpatin eh i boardige eguzoba ilona eli interviewer no ma elenza injolokono yama candidates ebese ge ibega ge ingomo za zo kunongoshe zimpilo eh iskati sokse benza sale seskulu iskati se nyagemisano esuvuselelo kanye. Ebese ge eh i boardi futi namanja ukuti imi. Functions of the C E O are designated by the board. The C E O has to run an efficient administration including human resources investigative unit, complaints of fraud, corruption and has to appoint the staff to the fund. The C E O liazes with the district management office. The eh the C E O has to establish the units of planning, benefit, provider rates and payments, accreditation, purchasing, contracting, payment administration, performance mon- monitoring as well as risk and fraud. The C E O also has to prepare the annual report for the for the board. And has to report to the board at least four times a year to discuss matters affecting the fund. And eh has to appear before parliament court quarterly. So ge eh iskulumlesi isona fanele spendule portini ngoba sikashwe i porti. Eh nao yonge msebenza sienza yo izobe ishiwo i porti ukuti senseini. Fanele sensei shogutisi pete i administration eh esebenza galje oguwa abasebenzi bonge. Kube umnyango wakzo penya kuba abandu u u u shaga ulpege lela iskalo. Ebese kube ilaba abapega ndaba ye fraudi ne corruption u pololo. Kuba enze shoguti labo bandu bakashe ngogwane lukutibenza leondo le eh. Ebese ukuti akuba uyena fotokumana ne ne district health management office. Akakumana ne district umnyango ukuti guenzagala ne umnyango ile guo ongama districts. Ebese ge eh 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 prepare ne annual report. Ogwe reportile eh iswaku auditor general apindege a report e portini gane ngonyaga. Apinda vele nasepal- naseparlament eh Cape Town mangabegu fanele ifund ifele. And then eh isha eh esasugosa stupa u chapter six talks to the committees to be established by board. Eh u clause twenty-three talks to the committees of board. Eh provides that the board will determine as governance committees eh which will meet four times a year. And then u clause twenty-four talks to the technical committees that the board will establish these committees. And the persons that are participating must have relevant expertise. Must be pe- people who are fit and proper. And they shouldn't have a conflict of interest and must not abuse eh their positions. So ge i boardi lana iyona ezobona ge ikala ma komitayo azosha naga bilka gane ngonyaga. Ebese kuba nama technical commishes eh committees ama komitioptkepe she na awazobe ikaluwa iloni porti. Fanele kuba eh abandu abano abano loazi olpusile kulezo injelo. Kuba abandu aba fit and proper no ma kuba abandu aba koto eh aba ngabi nama conflicts. Bangabi nezindo aba funuku izusa bangasebenzisifuti ga abi iskunja sabo mangabebeshala gla oma komit. Ebese siasugosa skombe sa u chapter seven talks to the advisor committees that are going to be established by the minister. Eh will find this chapter on page eighteen of the bill. Clause twenty-five provides for the benefits advisor committee. Eh the members of the committee will have expertise in medicine, public health, health economics, epidemiology, the rights of patients. And then the minister appoints the chair of this committee. Eh the committee will last for five years and it is going to be renewable, the term will be renewable once. Eh it it will determine the service benefits by level of care. Eh it will ensure the cost effective treatment guidelines as well as regulations to detail terms of reference. So ge leli komitileli eli bege ama benefits. Ekfanele kuba abandu abano kpepe she uze mbitlo. Kuba abandu aba pete u u abano kpepe she be public health eh umnoto uwe mbitlo. Eh izifo nama lungelo ez ez guli. Eh unongoshege uyena ozoko shalo wa leli komiti eli zoshala iskati se nyaga esimnyaga mshano eh vuselelo kanye. Eh ibona ge leli komiti elzo bona guti ama benefi ama service benefits ah akokelega ganjani. Ebese kuti futi eh kube ibona benza eh i mtetongangi ukuti basebenza ganjani eh egne zeni ezimbi. And then u clause si twenty-six talks to the healthcare benefits pricing committee. This committee will recommend prices for health service benefits. And then eh the minister appoints the chair. This committee will comprise of sixteen persons with the following expertise, it must be someone with extral science, someone with eh medicine eh epidemiology, health management, health economics, health financing, labour and rights of patients. And one member will be eh representative of the minister. Na loge leli komiti eli begene no zuso ama benefits ogutumundu aguazoguti awatole ukuwa zimpilo. Lizobe lko we u u unongoshe ustaloakona. Ilonage elzo belishuguti imali fanele zizo kokelewa ganjan for ongama health service benefits ukuti azoko kela wa ganjan. Guzo bage abandu aba ishuminestupa kuba abandu abano kpepe she uze mbitlo eh uze umnoto uze mbitlo eh imali zezembitlo abandu abaguazu uku kuluma ngama lungelo. Abasebenzi kanye nama lungelo abasebenzi. Ebese kuti oyetwa umundu ge oyobe emele unongoshe gla komit. Then clause twenty-seven on page nineteen talks to the stakeholder advisor committee. Committee will be having representatives from the professional councils, the health entities, the labour, civil society organizations, professional associations as well as advocacy groups. Eh people with interests will have to disclose them. And this will include personal and financial interest. And then procedures and remuneration will be determined by the minister of health in consultation with the minister of finance. Na guleli komiti ge gioba abandu aba no kpepe she abathile eh bayo bebe kama kuma council atile. Eh no ma ama associations eh kuba ama advocacy groups abandu aba mele impagati aba mele abasebenzi ganjalo anjalo. No gutige umundu mangabegu ne ne nama interest atile no ma izinlosesile fanele asho. No ma mangabegu enobiselawa nubtili obu personal aguazoguti abu abu disclose. And then ge ama iholo la leli komiti nalo li obe li li bewe unongoshe uze mbitlo envahoguti ekulume no unongoshe uze zmali. Ngilulengeyegu chapter eight. Eh esasugosa shaka lombeles kuluma ngama general provisions that are applicable to the operation of fund. Eh so itola lakuka page nineteen wherein u clause thirty-one talks to the role of minister. The minister eh is responsible for governance and stewardship of the national health system and the N H I fund. He must also delineate the role and responsibilities of fund. The national and provincial departments eh having considered the constitution and the national health act in order to prevent duplication and ensure equitable provision and financing. So ge lanase asuguti kulesiskaba se mashumama tatunanye ukuti u unongoshe uyena ozobe pete uchelo uwe N H I. Uyena futige ozobe eh ekatisa nginjela ukuti iskwama soksebenza ganjani. Eh unational umnyango unational nama province uzo busebenza ganjani eh lapage oyobe epe omtetos- omtetosegele uwe constitution kanye no mteto uze mbitlo lo esusebinseyo njenga manji national healthcare. Eh lage kwenza ukuti unga i nzsazozozozembitlo zenga duplicate tegi no guti si 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 shinsegelu nginjela eh ekondil. And then u clause te- thirty-two talks to the role of the department. Here we looking at the national health act as well as the constitution. Eh the department is responsible for the guidelines for norms and standards. It's responsible for the hu- human resource planning, the development, production and management. It also coord- coordinates eh health services. It plans development of public or and private health establishments. It also ensures the integration of annual health plans. And subject to section fifty-seven, the minister may introduce national health act amendments to delegate functions to provinces, designate categories of hospitals, autonomous legal entities, as well as establish eh district health management offices as government components. So lanage umnyango omkuluwe uze mbitlo unational. Fanele kuba wana okipomshanse njeela ngama norms and standards ama opel uze mbitlo. Ugashoga bandu eh kwenza uku plena ukutige ezembitlo zompagati kanyenala baba private ukutiku soksebenza ganjani. Ebese kutige unongoshe uyena ge oyobe esenikeza amanja ukuti eh ama province izazo soksebenza ganjani. Ne i bedela lezi ezobe zizme elezinga ngayi kahulmeni njengo Albert Luthuli ukuti zizo soksebenza ganjani nama districts nayo ukutia zizo soksebenza ganjani. Eh nama province ge njengoba ebese ngshilukuti azonikezwa ukuti izipi nda esebenza ngao izama province enikezwa unongoshe amanja kanye no umnyango lo i national eh. Gizojulage ngie last kuluma kona ngama general provisions applicable to the operation of fund. U clause thirty-three on page twenty talks to the role of medical schemes. Once. Ukuti ongu mundu ne medical aid eh mangabelomtetosoksebenza eh i medical aid oyobe esebenza ezitop up la i N H I ingafigi kona ogushugutige mangabegune stingezthile ez ngakaviwe ifund umundu ge i medical aid yake oyobe isimsebenzela lap. U clause thirty-six talks to the district health management office. Where in the national government component eh will manage facilitate support and coordinate the provision of primary healthcare services for personal healthcare and non-personal healthcare at district level. Lanage ila ezikuma districts ukutige uzoba nama office uku wana azobe epegelele ukuti kuma province uchelo lugnikezwa uze mbitlo hamba ganjan. U clause thirty-seven talks to the contracting unit for primary healthcare. Where we are saying the preferred organization unit will manage fund contracts at primary healthcare level. And then there'll be organizational unit which will include district hospitals, clinics, community health centers, world-based outreach teams and private providers within a specified area. And it will assist the fund in understanding the burden of disease accredited public and private providers, contract management and as well as ensure eh referral systems that are functional, integrated in both public and private healthcare services. So ge le le uniti ekuiyona ezobe i i contractor no ma ingena eh ivumeloaneni. Eh iyona ge ezobe i pete ukuti ishelolo uze zmali eh kuma pri- pri- primary healthcare level lu hamba ganja ganjani ubako kellega ganjani. No gutige i esebense impagatini eh ngoguazogutige i iljelozizi fo ezkona zinjani. I bedela ezkona ezkahulmeni no ma ezizmele zikokelewa ganjani. Kanye genokumani sage both ama private ne public healthcare services ukuti aguazoguti asebenzagalje impagatini. Then we'll move to clause thirty-eight that talks to health products procurement unit. Eh in this clause eh we i it provides for centralized facilitation and coordination of procurement of healthcare eh goods. Eh the health products procurement units must uni- eh must determine selection, procurement process, price negotiation as well as contract management. It must also support the benefits advisor committee to develop and maintain a formulary of essential medicine list and essential equipment list. It must also review formulae taking ac- into account eh burden of disease, new medicines, evidence of treatment options as well as prices. Le unitige i procurement ogu ibona ba tenga i nzsiza zezemiti eh iyona ge oyobe begelele ukuti eh i guazogu negotiate ama price kutama nanelle no gutige i pete i i am i i contract management. I i guazogu negotiate ama contracts nalabo aba provider ama services. And then clause thirty-nine talks to the accreditation of service providers. It says that eh there must be certification from the Office of Health Standards Compliance. Eh the acco- accreditation eh must provide, the person accredited must provide minimum range of services. Eh there must be appropriate number and mix of health professionals who are service providers. It must, there must be adherence to treatment protocols and referral pathways. There must be submission of information in terms of the identification, diagnostics, procedure codes, treatment, length of stay, referral and any other information. There must be adherence to national pricing regimen. There must be eh the accreditation must eh ensure that there's a con- galibinding contract with establishments or providers for a maximum period of five years. And the conditions for renewal must be based on benefits package, the certification, the staffing mix, the guidelines, the referral path. And the provider will have to be reissued eh accreditation and if they are refused eh they can also follow the appeal process. So lanage sisho ab ah ukuti lava abanikeza i nzsiza zezembitlo fanele babae accredited no ma banikezwa nama lungelo ukuti banikeze lezo nzsiza uze mbitlo. Eh fanele kuba kuba abanduke abaguazoguti eh banikeze i minimum range of services no ma guzo nugezwa ikopel ukuti inongane onga ongenzi mangabese kishwa ama regulations. Na no gutige eh labo ba yo fanele ukuti basho ukuti aba pete abandu abanjani no ma iskulezini njani eh gokulawazo. No guti eh ku- ku landelu maapi ama codes eh procedure ukuti batreitwe. No guti balshale iskatis nganani nda wenzu i bedela eh no gutige imali bo na ba chaja ganjan. Eh labanduke bazu benikezwe iku umnyalo glapa bandu ipiro di emnyaga mshano. Ebese kutige izovuselelo njalo envahwe emnyare mshano eh vuselelo kenge mangabese kubonagalukuti lowo mundu lowo. Eh una una maapi ama benefits no gutige i staff sake si mixege ganjan abandu abanalipu kpepe she aba kona. Eh no gutige ogijulsela ikuli uguazoguti a a ijulsela ganjan. Onga nugezwa ngage accreditation nae une lungelo ukuti ajulise iskalo logo sikbiza ngai appeal. Ebese clause forty talks to the information platform of the N H I fund. Providers and establishments will have to submit information as prescribed. The fund must use information to plan, budget, monitor, adhere to guidelines. And the pe- personal information of user must always remain confidential So lanage siasukuti eh Laba aba aba leta iinziza zo ngogweze mbi lo onga ba ipedela noma dogotela Fanele bahambi seke imniningwa ne njengoba kufanele eh iskwamenle squifund Fanele bawa zukutiba zidwebeleke lukusikmiza ngama budgeti eh besewe Be kunseka futukuti imniningwa ne iskuli xale ikuniwe ube infilo Clause forty one talks to the payment of service providers Yeah, we are saying the primary care eh the primary care providers will be contracted and remunerated via prescribed capacity Capacitation strategy, then the specialists and hospitals will be paid based on performance The emergency medical services eh their payment will be ca- will be kept And it will be case-based fee and then the minister will make regulations relating to payment mechanisms Lanage sishukutige lava ba leta iinziza ba azo kokelega kancani eh labo aba Okuche shino mama specialist azo kokeleka ukuti babone ikuli ezunga agi benze umsebenzo njani Laba bema ambulance na kona izo kepoa i mali akona eh no ukuti ba Visite abanda banjani abebedi nga usizo lputumai ungongo sheke uye na ozoguenza ama regulations Noma umteto u- u- umteto lo ozobushugutiguzoguenzaga kancani ukokelega wabantu Then clause forty two talks to the complaints clause forty three looks at the lodging of appeals When we are saying eh appeals must be lodged within sixteen days of receipt of notification by the fund Clause forty four talks to the tribunal eh the tribunal will consist of five persons that will be appointed by the Minister of Health Clause forty five talks to the powers of the tribunal, it says their powers will be similar to those of the High Court And it can also set aside the fund decision Then clause forty six talks to the secretariat eh that will be eh basically the staffing of the fund Then clause forty seven wo- talks to the procedure and remuneration Eh of the tribunal wherein we are saying the remuneration will be eh in accordance to Those funds after the consultation with the Minister of of Finance eh there shouldn't be any conflict of interest And eh the tribunal also may seek redress through The courts or the complainants may seek redress through the courts So lanage sishukuti mangabe ne ikalo iskwamalis eh isozo sizo thola izi ikalo Eh sispenye ebese ge si balela futi lowo ukomplained in writing ukuti singumezatin Umundu ge onga nesegile ngesngomo uyobe se gwasu ukuti afage i appeal iskatini se inzuka izi shu- izama Eh amashumi aistupa sixty days envah okthola lezo sngomo ukuti ya ikala ngesngomo se 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 fund Ebese eh ikala lo beselulage lia ukutribunal eh abantu aba aba is- aba islanu Abazo bebe gowey ungongo she amandla ayio itribunalge izo aba ifana namandla eh ngandolo epage me uyhi high court Eh ya gwasu ge futukuti eh bege ekeleni isngomosa uyifund And then the secretariat here ilokuza ne itribunale istafu sizo sizo Izo banestafu eh nokokelewa wabo uzo ba gui i mali ezobe zivunyaliwe Eh pakatika ungongo she weze mbi lo noe zezmali eh akfanele kuba umundu onama interest eh ukutahlale Kule tribunal no ukutige nabo ba ya gwasu ukutiba fage i ilokuza ne bazu sele i kelo ngandolo And then eh chapter ten, we're looking at the financial matters Lanage sese sese xlageni i- 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 ulaga le shumi eh ku page twenty six Eh there's clause forty eight that provides for the sources of funding which will be through appropriations, interest and bequest Eh clause forty nine on page twenty seven talks to the sources of income which will be your appropriations Your general taxes, the revenue eh the shifting of funds from provincial equitable share and conditional grants As well as the monies that will be coming from medical scheme, tax credits The payroll tax, the surcharge on personal income And then clause fifty talks to the auditing eh auditor general of South Africa will be auditing the books of the fund Clause fifty one talks to annual reports Wherein we're saying the submission to parliament eh the the annual report will be submitted to parliament and the minister Eh the finances must be audited eh and eh the report must eh Spell out the activities that have been undertaken and the progress made by the fund As well as any other additional reporting information eh lolulxaga ke Lu kuluma ngo ngenda bazazmali ukuti i mali yalisi iskwame zokamga Eh i mali ge zizo kamga kule ku- ku appropriation uwu i mali eh abiwa eh ipalamende njalo ngenyaga Ukutige ibasu bebe kipa i mali engagana ni Ngekeke enda weni yugu tambazo taxwa uwu i general tax revenue ukuti Wongumundu o- o- uwu i tax brackete tile uzo gwasu ukuti akoke injela Eh na ukutige kuma provinces ku ekmalu ukuti si bangagi Ebese kukipa lendu tuche i equitable share ukuti i province zoto la maline So lezo i male sizi skisho ziswa kubravinci sesoya iskwameni Kanyenama conditional grants la city corner i mali irinfensi ukutense istingo estile Eskulenzukuti ise ukut department isi zoya iskwameni ngo Ebese ukutige nenndela le ekuma kuma medical aid Lama rebates la oma rebates ngegasese zatina asa zoya iskwameni Ebese ukutige nabasebenza yu bazo Tatelwa nabindela eh ne personal income tax ge loku siasukutinja lo goinyaga siye Sihambe se ilokuza ne i Si 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 file ko i tax i mali ge izo kamgalap Ebese ukutige eh i ngwa Kwama zizo bezipewa ngwaningi mapu ul- ul- los miza odita general Uye nage uyobe ngwangi i i ngwadi ebese ukuti eh sasukose samashuma aislan nanye u fifty one Isgabala sekuluma ge ngama annual report uwu i report fanele njalo goinyaga lpu me Lilo reportige liobe lia eh palamende na ungongo she liso be lip- li- lisho ukuti i mali Zizo be zi- zicon- zicona ngazo Zisho lisho futi lele report ukuti ipi imsebenzi enzi we ifund no ukuti isi hambaya yatinapi Kanye genagogongo kunye okdinga ukuti gu report eh senfila ekteni nige I'm now at the end, the last chapter is chapter eleven that talks to the miscellaneous eh provisions Yeah, we'll find this on page twenty eight Wherein clause fifty two talks to the assignment of duties and delegation of powers Clause fifty three talks to the protection of confid- confidential information Clause fifty four talks to the offenses and penalties Clause eh fifty five talks to the regulations The six eh that provi- provides for eh the directives that will be issued by the fund in the government gazet Then clause fifty seven talks to the eh transitional Transitional arrangements wherein we are saying eh the application of this will be in two phases Eh phase one will be starting from twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six And this will be eh the health systems running initiatives The NHI eh legislation which is this bill The foundation for a fully functional fund The purchasing of personal healthcare services for vulnerable groups And then there'll be establishment of committees which will be your national tertiary services The training and development eh committee, the benefits committee, the health techno- technology assessment committee And eh the migration of central hospitals The structuring of the contracting units of primary healthcare And the accreditation of healthcare service providers As well as eh the legislative amendments of twelve eh pieces of legislation that will be finding in our schedule And then the second phase will be starting from twenty twenty six to twenty twenty eight Wherein eh we'll then be looking at the continuation of health systems stranding activities The mobilization of additional resources as approved by cab- cabinet As well as selective eh contract of healthcare services from private eh providers Eh lolulxaga ke loktina le shumi nanye Ilas kuluma kona ge ngogute ama powas azo delegaitwa kancani Enda bazama talaa ukuti eh azo azobe uyi nizindeza amatala no ukuti umundu jeza kancani Kuba ama regulations kanyenama directive ukuti i i i ifund izo be Ikipa i i i i il- il- i kon- i kondiso njalo ku gazet Ebese ukutige clause fifty seven loktina ukuluma ge ngama Amatransitional arrangements ukutige eh umteto uzo sebenza kancani njegoba ngishukuti eh uzo be uama face amabili Eh gobba uhulmeni u- u- uy- uy- uyibo pezel ukuti lo umteto ukale usebenza noktwele ngoto twenty twenty nine So kusukela kulonyaga ku ya ku twenty twenty six eh uzo gwasu ukutige eh kupaswe lo umteto sivivinyo njegoba suletile eh kukwa Ak- 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 shabantu kutre noe i- i- i commitments obelpegelenama benefits kanjalo kanjalo eh No ukutinge iskwamale sisi gwasu ukuti sibe ne foundation ukuti sguazu ksebenzala Ebese ukuti ku face two azo kala ngoto twenty twenty six uyago twenty twenty eight Kyobe ge se kbona galu ukuti izi bazinyezindo ezi Ezi short day oh fanele zitnini swe kanye nenda bazazmali ukuti ne cabinet nayo Ibon ukutige eh i- itata lupi ulokuza ne ifaga eh I- i- iya approver ukuti kupagwe ama additional resources mangabe edinge Ebese ukutige nama 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 service providers atile agwa zukutashonswe ukuti Iskwamale sisi sibe nobijdelwano noma nama contracts nao ukuti basebenzane nao Ebese ge njegoba besengshilo ukuti ku i kushetuli etu ku clause fifty eight Eh sinelis ti aso yayoyongi umteto ezobe irepilwa ilomteto sivivinyo Eh we have yeah the list of all the 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 laws or the acts that will be repealed or amended by this eh By this bill yeah we're talking about the medicines and related substances act of nineteen sixty five The occupational diseases in minds and works act of nineteen seventy three The health professions act of nineteen seventy four The dental technicians act of nineteen seventy nine The allied health professions act of nineteen eighty two The medical schemes act of nineteen ninety eight The mental health care act of two thousand and two The national health eh act, the nursing act of two thousand and five As well as the traditional health practitioners act of two thousand and seven So yonge lemte to ingase ibegwe etale nome i- i- irepilwe noma Izo kichielwa envah ukuti lo umteto sivivinyo osupasil Ngia bona ku lukutininge zituba lukuti ku ube umteto ngia bon
Thanks so much Tell us na bno mo nanesan Aso beswani ge aba bapa inational health insurance aba kwabi Ayah emnyango aba kwabinje tuaba i yamkele lentu Tell us an Ya bulela lakul Pamgo kuba Tiku beke ezu mandi mbulela Unguni umsebenza wenzilezo zotela ndio ukuti samkele Delay by unions esnazo Ndiakalele ndio ukutige ngangokusinae une how zelbas ba bone Wamkele klums- klums sebenzu echu Siabonga uji nosa Siabonga asnae nindela Sine contract na baba Fanele nje na tumkasi tewa chungla banngumeli Onga bacho ngeliswe libslungo gobusa basenwa Ongi okwenza yo basebenza bako Akati Nesivumelo ano mamutlami Nesivumelo ano mamupigis Nesivumela ano mamakut lava band Yamfunsi owaset djekutu man Nesivumela ano mamkat lava band San endrus Man Nesivumela ano mamupan Atandi apa oni za Basenwa ki Bazoi kota ndiwele NHI nsegeka gusli Godwa ge siya egela i office of health Standards compliance ndio ukutige snetis ma public institutions wetu Sekenseki ndio ukutige asizu tati materiel esheli piti sisi emapek Ukenza ndio ukutiba figure ba credit che ube kutu e ku right ngobango kwenza londo You are killing the very system and it was Ya waso ngela maklin Siya fulaga njegango eh Izotela sngena ngogo kushele akon njegango kuzoti izo paramis omasenge pambi Izoparamis osetu ekubeni sitakriselu Ga yo yonge le ngitiusenzengayu ngogo sikrela ukuti Pongi abo aba fisa ukuti papose mkokoleni We NHI besitcho ukuti bayawamkele besitcho ukuti aba wamkele Samkele wongumudutin Ozanalondo ezana yo ya usunga pambiili Anu tell us an Ya sbongela muna ya sbongela tobani ni kwabele muna Gobu ni tela esisanda esidi muna zingono makiyo awama jola Di funu promise Sanders tulangroshlo bongo promise sanda sa kaufiga ngapambi uti kama nesbongo No ukutu sugapi and then ube sositindo ukututina Abanye bese kogama organizations uyafiya lakona Your name, your surname and the organization you are coming from and then you put your submission Bo shobo oybe kangan so ni tela ezosanda esinjan Ni nasen kambilitan pamsa ni tina songe abasiya wam Ya opasis Panal funu mkozi msebenzi nnyan mkoja Mpe dali pegna mko mta lisande scho yo season Mo wasela lo mo wasela mkechwe Ya bona banbanke Panse Zangoroshlo Batijanga gopongo batijasa tati Davasenwa ki Kona po Back in my corner Ya sbona nasi sanda Emnyango Sete green tereza ngapambi Ssbi ni senga pambi
Yambingelela, usi nduaga yini wakona kona la indaweni Ngithandukusuku majeno bonge at the same time ngithandukcomplain. When you introduce such an act, siya konona ngokuti, you can't introduce the act ekanje just for a few hours. Because okaala safunu wenzwa ama research. Ni introduce sile iyongele akti, then nafaga nama ekta vele kona, then we need to do a research. We need another day si bu yesis oche kuguti iyonke iyonke lentebe kulunya la hindes ahi ikweni similar to the things as well as deala naso and I mean in deala naso what Department of Health. Two, ngokuti gule gules kwame so wenzio. Ngogwame if bekti wa gufokha somo ekshet no gubene ndo ezoba ismephe zelo so klima la wa ban tu ngap Department of Health. Siya akthabelela logo because espelena bali mala ba tu gubte tengu bakon. So if les kwama besapotintes ekanja abantu abazu klima, wo klima les pelena. Bengzo sisa ngono detwa ngiti siyero pegil. Siyaro pega ifne dosa nizo nizo introduce sa we ektekanje for one day, not even one day for hours. Siya ivuma ora ya siya ivumi esimparat because we are trying our best o kuvale omkopi abathlebe fusesi ma onlorize ektrine yini sifumise ndo nganti umkopo zo fusesi ma. Yabonge azoma napo womanchi. Tella umsindu, unabiko anything?
Eh, ambonge gi bingelele ika malame ngoanda kwa raxin kisbongo eh, ngipamukewa 14 kunopa Lloyd Councilorengonyen kizobamfushane nje kakulu angale nje gi bonge kumnyango beso umundesu kumiso kutsitka eh, uyahambi sana eh nomteto kisotrapuna lapaya u section 2A eh, kisotkulisage kubahlali ku paligene kislu ngunkula ngasi nhlala phansi kisimpal. Eh, u section 2A okuluma ngokuti eh, lepele ye nHR funded by isingil process iso wenzwa gubelu lake ukunsekisa ukufike na nomaa ukunsekisa ukusis maali zo mnyangos sibenziswa genlele fanel kobaguzo fumela eh ilentuli kuzo fumela i port ukusikwa azumnikushis ama price achieve wenzwa ukusimali yomkalu aminimalika hulmen iso hamba indaweni nomiso kava abantu abaningi so ngano ngela neo ngai ivumi ngai wenziso silegelela ukunsekisa ukusismaximizer imalia hulmeni ngai wangu sisa fumela naso ukusilhizi ishot. Eh, mtlambe nu section 9 eh, ozo okuluma ngokuti o official web portali ukutse iso u fandwa eh eh, eh, end it eh, u section 3A funded by eh Public Fund Financial Management Act eh, mskabonge snayo iso ukunsekisa u wenzwa ifunding even more eh independently since iport isuwa zo kusgen nilele nomuwa zo kusnikushis sela ama price. So umundu u ivuma umteto ngayalo sasudoso esbid so ukunsekisa yekusi eh ukushie ama u imali isuwa zo masimese tega so des abantu ba gitsibo isuwa zo tola mtlambe u sizo olthandukusitka kwa hulmeni ngiyabonge.
Eh, ngi bonge kumpatisal ubonge ngoswa kwa klo okamunga eh kuwa twente kumso mbemuni sepaliti eh, ngilana genke kokepe silase mfundo anodlu shaba watch a person. Eh, no. Oh, Usher person, Usher person web web port ya same fundo anodlu shaga CHC. Okay. Yeah. No, no eh Partisalogo nginu umundu has been covered but mtsaumbe eh, umundu uyaphisa o uko shukuti with fully support eh NHI eh u kuteina nje ngabahlali futabashlo impo sefisa ngazu ukutse ngangnon ngokuti it has been implemented as of yesterday. Yabonge. Umundu befisukcheka slal ngokuti ekona yini intesengayenza nje ngabahlali njoba aktua i implementation date o 2029 ekona yini ndo esengayenza nje ngabahlali ukutse mtlambe ikuwazu kuti ispitap eh isheshen gesimo esisbona yowechlali u wapando. Two eh mtsami about eighty five percent wa ballali basabenzisa ama public service centers eh, umundu befisa u kcheka u kuti eh, kungase kubemtlambe abacholi betu njawa belilla sebekeba icheka yini is state of readiness uma institution da wa eh, jange epellela seitu eh, egwizona eshtabelekzona akul kobangi tabango kuti abiosisa slal ukuti sikulume singome sense yonki ndo ebene ktolaka ngokuti espelena seitu as equal ready for ukuti si implemented loxelo but having said that, we are fully behind with support it. Thank you.
Sambunan Ungos nazi kwa rra apisisbongo eh, ngia imuge lipili eh, ngifisa u kukandastenda enka kzuanga eh kukulunya u LGPTI ukutse uwo na uzo zozaani nje ngobanjenga majesine kenga yowekipopulation kakulgaza ngaluklelo society la LGPTI na manya ma kipopulation iloko pele ngiyabonge akun.
So tella the second round of the hands. Genando. Hmm. Tella esni sandez landelayo, imaspakala bangene boku. Telli sandez landelayo, genando. Sikona sini. Itella sina kijaseki unachi sesketile umtubengo naachi ingati ngaparamis. Atendeles, bat teleso somlo bangen. Atendeles somlo mubangen. Ndiateba aspele san tella unge ne ma munkisi.
Ngibonge slalung bingeleleka kuluka kuluscho ba kuwe slalo ngibingelela ma lungo eh eshamteto sakwazulnatali leadership yagu uku ama departments wonke nje nompahati ika malame nguntoko azomkise gishala endaweni asamzumbe what 19 kisabenza wintlangano esmele bizongtu Broadridge Health Development slaloman ngale ngisho njoguti eni iyonke ndo that six two support universal health coverage we support nganala ngispramsesiti siya siya isupport nje eh NHI ngi tatekele afakma closes ama ngani njoguti biyegwa kala khaswa kulunya ngokuti it's alainega ashleku section twenty seven no twenty eight of the Bill of Rights ama lungelo atige wonge umundu ne lungelo eh billo equality ika equality ne lsonipani isidima sa kumundu wa pinto wa tasesela kuto section twenty eight six two eh show that ngisho izngani siana eyegela klo xelo ngia supporter kakulu kama kamenchino onge slalo godama closes lakuluma tu seven eight nine akhaze khaswa kuti in terms of healthcare service package kyogwenze ekanja tinajenga abantu seosuka ema clinic nomwa godo tella
Lsonipani, wakona umtu osho paramisa yow, tella umsindu wetu welse.
Podutse akondu kuti nomasisi wi NHI godasiyo kala ema clinicis nomwa ototo tella basakeli sini wengwa wama level sini ngatingo seitu ngokuti ika kulu u close eight umenchinega ashle kuti health service will be free at the point of care mtsaumbe onkelu sakjabulele siya gu supporter foot kakulu kuti at least as part of ama service benefits kyoba koni ekomi depegele lok ngokuti kuzoba koni contracting of kuzoba koni contracting unit at a primary level oso wenzwa sho utse zonkes tingoze hamba khas ika kuluseng kwa klasalosipam sela nje sini ngomela ngokuti iso wenzwa impilo zatzi benonu but at the same time they will be transparent ngoba u close fifty ushi lo kuti they will be auditing that will be done by the auditor general and was was kunsekisa u section fifty one ngokuti we will there will also be annual reports ayo chair ayo chair eh parliament na gumi nisasi isaprotaka kuluslalo pambili. Thanks.
Sabonga.
Staluk bingelela u ekomi dile zempilo eh, elkamga wishe mteto spinde sbingelele bonge abainba enye yalestanga msana mtsaunje lo okuluma yowe usbong senua kaskosa okamga eh mfundo anodlu shabo community health center eh, uslalweni hau kon apinde futabe uslalweni hau kuitepen richin ngogo glande la umko mo slalo wafeti reishit une hau okamga giwon ikosa atu ngogo glande la ulhelo lobkomanis olfumelu kuti abantu bompahati mabalingane mabetole yinziza kuhulumeni ngoglinga nayo siya iseka ai NHI yu ulhelo lbaluleka kakulu kuteina sizo smpi sholo elzozenza wakuti asisbona ukutse kuhlumeni weskatza nmla mtsaunje uyasilegelela nje ngabantu abamnyama kanyene sizo sonkes pelele ngale kokbanjo lulule ngapos zwa lo wako slalo sitosukuti eh NHI inalbugeli phansi ulhelo lobhutula osoma business abamnyama lulule olpikiswa kakulu ngamalakush BTRPPE ogusho ngokuti asboni ukututukiswa kwenya lasizinda ya mapisnisa abamnyama ukuzebanileze ngemkikiliso ezempilo bapinde futu balegelele inde nyama ukoshia ikati ezigo siya bonge.
Lushaba eh, oh manje omegui ez nyateleni zenyunyane bizongotinoza wakoni nyunyane yamanesi eh, slalo singu tinosa ngikuluma ngaphanso go 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 Hisne Nationali ngikata abango tsinani niyazu tinosi yaluamgelela lushelika kulgazo ngoba eh, luso tutukisomparati wetu eh, kuganengeke siyifisi inklele zenge ngalisi I think we stone is katimaniso kutisamge ngutshulumeni wetu asisenza lukesa wukethela god ukutshulete iinziza ne ngale zongo abantu esidina yow, ayilesa zacangwa u ibo ukutse siya idina manje siya bonge ngutse ene lulhelo luso siza kakulu ngoba eh, sini ika kulusla fekizetendla bankulu mji ngapasa kizetend indawo seitu ziti prurala ngasukwena tsengesizo ziguti kakulu zingamakale kakulu ezingizingala zindasguazu guy lululhelo sponjizo kuwazukseza nabanga kon nabanga hold abanga sebenzi abanga holi peseni angazispoyle list kon simtlambe ten miles away koto kunyeklinikeela koto ngwamklambe i private wengwa kuwazuku yagoni so asisbona angatzigelzo sebenza kakulu siya bonge kakulu njoba ufo tse shilo velen ngaphasaka kosta atu besweli sislwa amgelile eh, siya temba ngemanjo kuti nompahatu siya onda ileshes i i mtetosake lo shai obegiwu watu lagite ukwenzwa gubelu ngokuti nompahatu wetu umtondo kuti luso sebenza ekanja siya bonge kakulu.
Asbonge mtsalanga pambili basengi ngabingeleli kama u sizo orando o uspika omkani woku districts eh, apinde abinda enye ye portila paya escort back HJ Crooks No, mtlambe umundu befisukala ngokuti mtsalanga pambili asbonge isetuloo enislesele zona la manlezi isetuloo la ngoba umundu meditists balekilukutsi vezukutsi districtyeju ukuluma maspalo kale tuwa mtoni onama watau nineteen eh, ubeso uzamzumbe onama watau twenty uzere ngonyen ona thirty six basu ya mzo bandu ona eleven and the population yetu iofia kona nine hundred thousand so uma upegit districtyeju uzo ytholo umtlambe twenty percent wenda wlezi ezina abantu aban oktata entwin ngengizo oktho abathliza sambane lka po ondu enlaho abantu ba alondikus siya akthablelu kuti limiting etu namtsaunje ibela lakhlali kon abantu labanteskuluma ngaba abantu abangena medical aid abantu abanga sebenza abaningbabo abantu laba abalindele kuti basiso hulmeni ngamakrant uma oguti nina nje ngama members of parliament kakulu one ya fisukusukuti i thulo i nde enye zutunwela ez thulula up to eleven simele district siya msana naso issa atso kusamzanena za gonanjie ukuti because kusho wena na kezwa ibona labantu ukutse name nyoba maila futesikthabela wutimpide nezakenzoba bus eh, wenza kakulu lis kati yorutiksalu tatis kashana le nyare nziyo yiboni lapa gavesu tesi place intenzobensens engabango tibalegile ene aso wenzwa sho kuti si isinga gala le NHI siya akthablela logo bat okunge enikwesa olapaya ali umundu pela oma Luisana analog ilomundu onomona menga beangu olimlit eh onomon nongasi inshupego zabantu oasi ena pela ngulmeni amigemanj yine medical aid koto ispelena ngisabenza kulisa lapanasikaya actua mfundo lushaba ngano masinta ndanale kamai ngia fisane no kushukuti eh experience siya eh, ngine medical aid lululhelo zoba sisa kulandbagit le isa kiusa hulmeni sisa kakulu singono akuluna lize eh private sinestres awasu wambaye private sa hamba nalis it just the population lusi sasponjizo sisa sisa kakulu nalagutseke abantu abazu kashwa omelanana na lumsabenz yavezo laputa abantu abao fundele lumsabenz we are with board ndelele zo kethwa ngakona inda enye folapa iakvezalo ilohomtlambe siti abantu balokuin isimorake beslin dele sense ngia vumelanana nobabu kuhlumeti if bena inde lo kutsuweze pifoli amnyap bes ngakthabela kakulu ngale ondela su uku simele uku siya msana kakulu nalulheleni leti siya bonge.
Iya bingelele kabathonisha bonge abanga pamwetu ngibingelele abase benzi kakulgas bezempilo abaparati wetu namtsaunje dabapati be epellela seitu nama clinic ngibingelele mparati wonke ki umama okanyase eh, omele ama koskasi eh professional level eh ngifuna nje ugusho ngokuti besivelese sivengeve sili ndile il sili nde kakulu kuti aisheshi iopasiso parliamente omonga meili besi iakaliya sebenza ngoba tinajenga senga besifazane sibulawa ikenza ika kulgazi yesinya usugno sugo kusalindi wewe kuthwa ite intiakho igute ngobi epellela bezingane ezguazu kuti ziskokele u gule 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 kenza espatai uba ulusa ikazu sunosuku manje sesiya zukuti ngegusalinda inkosi alpeti for months sozo fsheshu yenge edhuze espelena sedhuze siya bonge kakulu logo futige asisabi ngoba kunomteto lo osho transparency ngokuti aguko kuzwenzeka ngasese kushukutige tina uma kukone sekbona yow kuti agohambi ngelena kulula ukuti sisheshi sisebenzise umteto ukuse logo ogwenzekayo unandike asbonge futi ngokuti abantu anabetu kakulgaz laba abas abano mshopi ukuti bapati mizi bebanani lomteto uso bapegele ngoba begunzi ma kulesi zingane ika kulgazi ngoba zbezi be ama victimze rape begunzi makaku lukzona ngoba inde la be iba inde kakulu kusebatune peto lumsizo siya temba kuti imteto le NHI eh isobaranti manje geengitlayo gembina ngitllo kuti siti ukfundisage abapati bezempilo normal ababaspatele ezempilo ema clinicetu ukuti isimoma nje sesoshich ngenge ngusaba eh business as usual ngobukuhlumeni luso besi kokili mina nje umundu be medical aid ngasakale kuti ngabo september sikesa ipelili medical aid endangti ndwa ama private ukutufika nje batina fengina 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 kuthwa lack of funds nomayo funds are finished sekfanel kuti angiyela paya eh, ekliniki futi simbongo kuhlumeni ngaloko ngobuba mtlambe ngempe la wa aktua wenune medical aid asaktatu shuti besi zofavel siya bonge nalama expenses angaga ebese ngena gona kuthwa umundu unde kenza kipeli medical aid uzutaisa gonko kunye onago uzama ektrine ngotu mutahambi anishie ngasahlana lalantlala kon siya bonge kakulu kuti konke lokumanje se kuzoba izolo sikubeke khas kuningige ebese ngakusho koto nje singa ama koskasi siya yamugeela NHI yabonge.
Tella nje be bonge ma kwaje lizan na liyituba la lelema legal advisors etu ndo tumawangene apefumule epefuna ngogwama closes that needs clarity ndo kufanaba wenzwa njalananga wu wenzwa ndo ukutse nje ngongo kwa zeklot kupenduleke hapo banemi buzoo ngokuti kuzo wambakanja obuva tio mgoni.
Ngibonge slalo eh, eh ngibonge kuninano ngi njoba nisapotha nje lomteto swivinyo sulhetile siya bonge kakulu eh, uputi upegitenza u ubuzengaleni ndaba kuti i research enziwe yini ngabantu analaba eswi ah, oka abantu ogo ingane zabantu ba ngaphansi ngokuti kuzwenzeka mtlambo kuti ingane yala South Africa ngawazuktholo sizo ngogwe zempilo ngenga ngokuti eh, says prioritizing nje njoba esenkazi lukuti umteto ssegele wetu eh, ikonsitushinya la South Africa u section twenty eight ushoka shlo kuti every child ine lungelo lo kuti itole u sizo le zempilo so asiguazu kuti sikuase ngokuti loona agazalwa abazalibala ezwe ngokuti atole u sizo by the mere fact kuti lo umundu yingane eh, eh uzo kuwazukutatale u sizo ngogwe zempilo ngenga yow kuti une lungelo ezingane ukutatale eh eh healthcare eh ebese watinda nenndaba kuti eh indaba yama ambulances u kuti laba abal abasebenza gwa nabakwa zukuti bakatka eshi upegaa ama ama patients eh, ndo umpagolo ngiatabango kuti imnyango yoyomili national no province bakona eh njoba ngshilo kuti ama provincesa umteto yasho kuti imapa ma responsibilities abo ebese nineshinali imapa ma responsibilities abo ogonyegwa abo indaba eh human resources kushegwa kwa labo basebenzi so ngiyaktabango kuti bazule na abo ndo eh, ekona emteto ene fanele vele yenzeke eh, usisi o, usisu utudu zile ukwala ukulumeni ndaba yama lokuzane ya yama ambulances u kuti manane ishotai jaa u kuti kuzo kwenze ekanja obukona nje uzo pega zongelezo zindu kuti iinziza zo 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 sebenza i, i ndaba yow i empilo zabantu uzo kanane kanane kuzobe ku provide wa wongama resources afanele eh, infrastructure ekanja laga njalo nama ambulances ezingizindo ezizo pegelelo kuti zia provide wa ngoba njenga majesias u kuti konala wa a private ebese uba konala wa a umpahati ama lawa ashe epelle aga Department of Health so nabola ba abapprivate baso besi be registera njenga ngaphansi kwa lomteto kuti naboba ama service providers so wongu umundu tengaa u sizo le ambulance angengekwa swa u kuti loona u private lo u public mama begu ambulance nje iacrediti hii wewe ukuti isobe issebenza ngaphansi kuslo xelo lo NHI lo ambulance isuwa zukuti ise ikichime indikesu sizo agushoge u kuti i departmenti isokoza na yow kuti itole iinziza lo koko kuzwenzeka eh, nemali fanele ibekon u kuti lezintelelo zone ngesihambi khaswa ngaphansi komteto kota wongama ambulances azobe issebenzisa issebenzisa lulhelo fo wonge umundu kon eh ebese u sisi u sindiyeni eh o si si tathile iskalo so kuti umteto swivinyo losu lete po ama ama awazambalwa asikuwa zangu kuti sishale nabantu batoli tuwa lo kuti bayza i, i research abo babuye eh, ngiyaktabango kuto za wetu labazo bege porti ngokuti ustalu besi shilo kuti sizo tata isetuloo up till mtsaka five ku september kule nyanga eh, nizo wazukuti ni emaile nomane WhatsApp eh, njoba ama bills ekona ngawazu kuti ni habe na wunisale kaya nikwabeningi nbuwe nbuwe nispaalele nishukuti igupenfisukuti ku edwe igupenfisukuti eh ukisho kulo umteto swivinyo ogonye akthindile ndaba yow kuti eh i kompenzashini abantu anda i, i, abalimala eh epellela eh, mangabesi bega u close thirty two ila okuluma konanga ma responsibilities ama ama provinces ne lokuzane
Mka ban guti ile zozido ebengiti angesa drise ogunye siyabongha akulu sibonghe nogutini slalele dangi.
Abonila ban akwaba, taba vimbu kucha ndizbani kuchacha. Aban akwaba nza bavimbu kucha, seliza. Eh nyabongha akulu, nyabongha akulu eh. Mchela umsebenz, godwa pamo goba ntingene nyatangba nboni. The PPP officers suffering from the municipal as well as the institutions obabanasu. It's related to public participation officers as a corner. Apa esu sokuini kogo maspa. Konde weli dangi, unabanyo maspa. Mzun, lindura, mzun, akeko, asnayo. Nifuna njendokunseksidotisina bonano basinabo. So that's iguazo umsa, mchela lo se kuzenjengezi. Si funa ogulungiswa akulu when it comes to that because inwelo ye tio basiongena. Winda wesi akuso, owe tu PPP nokanya ntselusugun. Owe tu PPP, etwena no tumsan bakuma na no PPP bomaspa la. Kona oguzesiguazo ogufumana inchela yendokuti aban gubesa aganjani. Aban gubefaga njanu bakukona ndoni. So ukule yendokuti sibaasi yendokuti gobani na. As much wabengeke but now that I know yendokuti we do have ulindan. I know it always been a problem. Sense of that is declared again on a secret town. Send ifuna njendan ifunkuas doti gobani na. Obak, immobilization is obviously stronger versus our officers that are there. That are supposed to be assisting the situation. Thank you so much, ulindan, at least I do have your number. Eh mandboni, disa ongena konselolo guti. Ogulume nda ogulume do oyazi ndosayenza, noyazi ndo ayenza. Ute akwagungena obusimose, uksuga goit from nineteen ninety-four. Ukya ku nineteen ninety-nine. There is a South African health review that has been done. Enzwa yo kwa jongwa yendokuti simipina noxelo lewetu romnyango wesentilo. Obasasuke la wani from nineteen ninety-four to nineteen ninety-nine. Obasifunu jonga back from nineteen ninety-three ukuya pambi. Tiyayase chef's best way to be on the batili. And it was John, ngongo kujenganga obusikuku yewa mnyezelekile ngoto. Mapu jongwa yendoba ukxelo lumijani na. Ilon ndo kujenganga obandokuti nifunu nihtata since it began nineteen ninety-nine. This is a figure, two twenty-two and two March. The first case is COVID nineteen. Eya fikela SN Augustine. Yangenakwa beskiti Masliel Committee. Siyo teki shaindokuti pasasiva. Lendo enginea lenengula lazoo. Inga ba ama institutions wetu arekanga kana mina. Ugumela na nesimo, sasimuyama chavia lingan. Sitas ngakansikibelo natselomsebenzwa swenza. Watwa ike first cases in ifigil, ifiga ete private institution. Unfortunately, kengwa yowu yowu kunku kono ungevan. Public no private, asiguazo ungevan ngoba. Oh private aban abanyanga yo city. Zotini si market ya abo. Obanulekile ngoto, kaku fika yendokuti zo kupisa ikati lela ngani tana gekovic. Ibinga ikati lela nguto nomaki kumbani. Is a tata nekashu ne medical eighteen and twenty, yebona lot. Ngongo kujenganga obu kandi ngu private sector. Disa wenzaganchani ndoba nitingenwa nandisunet. Nsibonile tini NHI sebenza Silal Committee. Ngoba umgebe fona nobefona, bakrepo 17 especially. Upelai oxygen, unabando bakona. The well of hipiscus hospital, yo tato koni i oxygen. In market, mchala bessebenzana, kolo shobonjal. Ka ogu, izidwenzin, lezenzigele. Asilifumanitla shelo basidozo thula guni. Niyazidoguti na abo wenzekayo ogulche. Itela ogutigenjenanga, niyazidoguti kasila NHI. I see ondoba kutwa yindo esasawakala, inga kangelega esasawakala. Yama goma phase, kona nje ngangoku sele ekon. Ngelanga kusakiwa the Office of the Health Standards Compliance. Yon abefu jongwa nama institutions, zotini lekelle lokuzo jonga yendokuti. Amag clinic way to the public sector institutions. Zenza aganjani na, it is an independent body like obasisoba ne bot that is so independent. Aga kombo so tijenga ngogo what ati. Hi, no long long day catch up. Ingati uhamba next aliltil. It is an independent body, efuntrinseki sa crisis akun. Is all jonga ogutinjenanga obu. Inga ba nimiganjani na, ningama public sector institutions. Ugumela na nesimo. Ogulume nda ungenelele, siyayase yendokuti. Infrastructure is kaya makispelele setu, espegruses. This is a site and general walking yendokuti. Nyayibona inasika, nyayibona ipod chefs in hospital. The grant that has been injected by it by by the government. It has made ipod chefs in hospital to look like a hospital. It has it has got a face and it is a one. It was not there, but it is there. It is part of the NHI. Zonkeso sijengez. Kuma clinic where there were no securities. But isimo esina so we've got pharmacies, they will as asging. Young, ngongo apagati, be human resource, be the equipment. It needs to be protected, we do have some securities. So I want us to look at it positively. Si ngayi jonga nngelisela yendokuti eh and so zenzek, yenzeka ngoko. Ngoba, onga basitumela sisi tijenga ngogo. Si funu kuazo oguba, i clinic ya se mfundo shaba. Imiganjani na as a community health center. Inga ba is it is standard. Eric tweguso as a community health center because. Kauteda ngeki clinic as emapek, ne clinic as ne clinic as ekamalake. Ne clinic ya se, ya se ya se mtalume mfundo shab. Zesuke nazo clinics nja. So ukfuneka i clinic ngani, i rate according to i expertise ya yo. Ipod chefs in hospital is a regional hospital. And then so figure, enaskena matisini a district hospital. Inga ba i district hospital ngetkama na, i empty na. I does it provide what is supposed to be providing? Those are the things as a strong one, as a strong one currently. Is that is that oh SSC, ukxela jonga is a sijaja. So ogubanulekile yendokuti, zonke esisindo, zibesi abane esisso thula. Mi parati etu, city kanga basitindenga ngoksina ma what committees. Afanele amag clinic, amagama clinic committees. Amabots, hospital boards, ngaband ababawi governments. Yekuzo katu yendokuti ogulume nda wenzagancha. It governments, that means the hospital boards that are there. Byokati la umpagati yendokuti, yendokuti zenswa kaku xena. Then kango saksuneka numpala tubus yendokuti. Sinaona imichanga na abantu be to eswatu melekuma clinic. Eswatu melekisbele, yendokuti mabaya ongena gapagati. Asifunwale uluazi, baku yewa sasise. Kono guse singa kankalas, kandisankalasela yendo ehenzwa yekona. Kengwa yendokuti sanga kangi sabano uluazila. Incha la yongele eighteen, infrastructure towards implementation of the NHI. So on disama oguti, sasa, on the sixteenth and the seventeenth. This is a puma shamtetu. Irrespective of Batsinaral Committee. All the members, the legislature, this is a puma to different districts. Zio jonga oguti, inga ba. Uxelo lesenpilo, lunikezo ngosobetwana balu, nikeso ngalo na. As ifiga sizo jonga, ladosu tundo basa obales buza. Winochi, it is a keta kuwa, sitistano ongena paya. Sisa ongena glenda wo, ekwana basingene buyo. Es, kinasasasinsikamanda ngondon, senzi polisi. Asa ondo jongu chofanjani na. Godwa si funu kuchongi yendokuti, i clinic ya bo basingena eketeen. Is it talking to the standard, the norms and standards? As it can about the infrastructure, a clinic, wana ba ibenge. Ngena ngapagati, do you have the norms and standards as far as the equipment is concerned? Yonge landole, tiyayase dotsyasi, wasisbele, fikia kunengwa kendo. Ute umdo sebenza yo, onikeza yo, in the line of the emergency ward. Ofu masidoguti, unomiumdo zotiena ewa SCM. At and this is a good thing, galando because it do. Okanya, at and this is a good thing, galando, kengwa yendokuti. Ah 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 and kimanina yo. Aba yena, he use a friendly person. Eh di ngayi yendokuti, magaba yeyifuman. Those are the situations that's to bananas. I will sc- I will call to ignite it 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 today. Ka ezau lila, unese no sebenza yo. Kengwa yendokuti, on onga pambi, by CM. Aga mnikese ndoto makafuman. Akonipshu nga kusaleka ngondwa na. Be itu se kusaleka ba oti livas. Kupshlu ngoba opume no mama no ngondwa no osolekile. No ba ngondwa no osolekile zo obale kamenila, osoleki. Then ke kanga ba umrisasiteta. Inga ba is in those corner, kikwe what, yon risasiteta ngondwa na. In in your next, si kona na, is norms and standards. Tijetan tijenga ngogo yendokuti. As amagabakuti mabaya as yendokuti. Siba mele, tinasi kondi, nenene policies. Assist versus wooza is missing. And we know how to deal with our situations where things are not there. And yet siyakakecha, if financial cycle say Kalil. If budget see passi seal, jomas pasela budget, you see passa base. Ute, uthe, i political head is a wenzan don. And then gogo sabetina sisa wenzan donina. I committee, the department is a wenzan donis, niggas at the annual performance plan. Tina, we are to tell a based on that annual performance plan. Just seek, just seek dogotela on policy, on through the policy eye. Inga ba is it talking to the needs as a identified ngoba madelana. No guba, it's just what they said in copy and paste. Because that is a problem we do have when it comes to the officials. They come with copy and paste, umlanga say analyze, and raise the say, uba iti mina. Then we further tinangosingene kwayetu, system, enaskena ena annual oversight plan. As is a withdrawal, which are based on what has been submitted by the department. And we only draw out all those things. Admins as a boss say budget, sanu sensea ishazo. Dogba si bossa say ama budget, now kibani na, afe ilama budget. Imali ibu yewa umva, because me a faila we utilize. Me a faila we utilize. Panisaka i budget is then you don't consult, abantu abas benefits beneficiaries, zenu. I yonage melva leonjanga ngogo, kaksakiwa ti DHP. It DHP sume nusuwa straighter clinic. Ute lo se clinic watutinga ndoni na, kobanga umpagati, lonatilana. Disama ogutidenanga ngogo, ba gutetwa ngenda ba yoguti. Inga ba ama institutions wetu arekina. As a bar rating, obatinasi beki le miteto yon ekona. Since begging structures that are supposed to be doing that. So I I don't want to go further. Yatunga yendokuti, abai, understand that you learn. Obabukuli ya yendokuti report. It governments le, smela was boni, you took time. Was been now, kobe kobe ebes been now, ama hospital board. Godwa nje ngogo, sele ekona, nama clinic committees akon. Yonge landole, yamba, yote, yoten, yote yendokuti. Aga ko ogulume nda onga meleleganga, na kwaye ipina institution. That is what we are calling it, it is health system. Isuka pantsi, is ongena pi, is in you, is your chopezzo. Obasno we understand angolo shobo. Hence that review, ekona kenega twenty twenty-two e review. And we post the COVID. I make a clear yendokuti, ama emergency bed wetu esina as a public health si minjan. Ama emergency bed wetu esina and enasika ipalotseka imi jan. The resources that are there, if now we are going to form in our eh yotwa, ye mali. That means jenga ngogo, whatever ekona, every private sector. Is a is a be iti jan swanda woni. Na don't need ne public sector, but kusaba kuno mteto in doing that. Agu zufela kutwa njeragyo woluwa, ngapayakwela kan. There are funds that are being given by the private sector by the government. Lo mani jenga ngogo, yonama lefneka yes yendokuti. It's going to be ete lesser, is is all iti janiswanda woni. And ifuni yendoba nitingenjenga ngogo, nisa wa up. You are distracting abantu bam members. Goba basize la ni, na funa ni veleni wake. Gobani ayituula letafi. Disama ogutakisa lelelelelenje ete eh. Menda beko ndio yoguti eh, asiboni lendusenseka ngosobespati kanga halo ma clinic. Ta obona ismosa se clinic, kusbona yendokuti, nesbele setu bu yendokuti. Our public sector ayenzi into. Yayi, Tina, we don't give i hospital, inso, i hospitality. Utundoswa ofagwe awotino, fagoa iwo beke la ITV, utundoba that is all. Kata, yunjenga ngogo, uzo uzo, obanga ba usayawotino. We as wino tiki wotino, ibana abantu abanga pina manesa, meba meba ngapina. Since Bonile is kane go success as a COVID is wenza. So what can amanese eh hamba. Esenza ikado of ona bebe shlebenza bonke. Aba nje ngogo, sbea puwa bebe bari se motua. It has been so painful. Funeka niyazika ondo, kukasmento, kupinda wakona. Amwale elokebe, ali ondo elula ngoba, kusmeka kutwa ngadon gemali. Ilende sibona yendokuti, unga anislibela kuti fighta abantu abanyi, abapenestita. Kuya abapenestita we health, uthe benga tiban. Indonlay bangelidoti jenga ngoba beko baba private, mabekona abantu abapublic. Inga ba rofna si understand the land, and funu. Kubera kulu. And funu kubera kulu, sasa, avukalispatunge. And ifuni umto osa uhamba ngogo, ayolungis, akindi opiyolungisela as members. Koshwa, because kusaslinge lasonge neketeen. You want to see them, kasesa ngapagati. The reports esina so, sesina, the report, kasi siyama institutions. It's because we did have ama prince visit. So siya konanga, siyalandele yendokuti, kengbele ngabele ngunchalo na. And then si dipoteja kibisitina, what have you done about that? Itela ogubanjenga ngogo, kundbesen, nikesela. Zenza ituba lo guti. Itela umxen, ana wamebe ngowa, msen ya ovala, senda nkulun. Itela utuba lo nganjia ngogo, ni bulaleka kulu. Kaya wonge umtoso nikesi, kashelo bazoba kona klimeting. Sena atis ngabane swafumanama klasa pati, asinalo itres. Asinalo itres as bambalwa, singala ma members wa le committee.